I'd like to call a meeting order for East Hampton Planning Board, November 27th, 2012. Their motion to accept the minutes from our November 13th meeting they presented.
Motion to accept.
Well, I said one was a typo.
Uh-oh, and a table.
I'll get that out of there in a second.
The lead is actually L-E-E-D instead of, we have it as L-E-A-D.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
Other than that.
So with that one correction, any other corrections or?
No. Okay, so with that one correction.
I think the motion may accept with that one correction.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions. We're voting on the minutes. Are you going to abstain?
I wasn't here.
That's what I call abstaining.
You, I believe I did that, and it's just out of curiosity, we were transferring and I missed the correction, what was the correction that you requested?
The leads.
Okay, and you see, I've actually already corrected it, I need to send it out again. Sorry.
Okay, before we go any further, there are people here for public speak, I'd like to allow them to go ahead and if you have the floor, come up here, you can stay there, you can do whichever, we're open to the door.
I'll stand up, sit over there.
Okay.
My name's Julie Copullos, I've been a resident of East Hampton for the last four years, lived in the valley my whole life, and I'm here to discuss the allowance of residential kitchens which are currently prohibited by the zoning ordinances in East Hampton, specifically 10.43 of the ordinances. That section specifically prohibits bakeries among other occupations in the home, including bed and breakfast and tea rooms, a couple others outlined in there, and it's come to my attention after talking to a bunch of people that these ordinances were put in place over 30 years ago, and they haven't been revised to kind of, let's see, they haven't changed with the current economic climate, and they haven't been changed in order to reflect rezonings in East Hampton that have happened over the last 30 years. So, in these times where we're having, we're seeing a little bit of economic hardship, it's important that we reexamine our positions on certain prohibitions in order to creatively stimulate the economy and create jobs, we have to adapt. Doing, passing this would enhance the economy by providing immediate jobs for people either without employment, or people without the capital to start a small business right off the bat. It would also encourage local business in East Hampton for people who are commuting outside of East Hampton to have jobs in either Northampton or Springfield. For example, if I wanted to bake bread out of my home, instead of, I would be able to buy flour at Biggie's, recirculate the money, and kind of re-centralize the economy here. It could also act as a catalyst for people looking to smart, start small community businesses, someone like me, who could potentially start a bakery, but I need to hone my skills a little bit, create community in East Hampton. The state of Massachusetts does already allow residential kitchens, and thus there are already guidelines and rules in place to regulate the allowed and appropriate behaviors in residential kitchens. So all kitchens would be inspected for health, safe, health and safety in alignment with these pre-existing laws. So just reiterating why it makes sense to allow residential kitchens in East Hampton, stimulating the local economy by recirculating goods, immediate and long-term employment opportunity, and just creating community, pride in East Hampton and its residents as creative and motivated entrepreneurs. So, thank you, and feel free to ask any questions.
Thank you. We don't have this on the agenda, but I will take it up with the board and potentially put this on our agenda for consideration.
Sure.
So it's commercial kitchens in a residence, is that what specifically?
Yeah, there's been a flux of people that are looking to bake goods in their homes. There's Board of Health regulations that regulate them. Jackie was going ahead and she was, or Judy, our health agent, was going ahead and approving these residential kitchens without thinking of the zoning. We have a home occupation bylaw that has a really long list of prohibited home occupations. I think it's time for us to take a look at our home occupation bylaw and look at performance standards rather than prohibiting a whole long list of uses, and that's very open, but it's a bylaw that's been in place for 30 years and times have changed, and people are in this struggling economy are looking to work out of their home, and I think this has been a problem that I've seen since I've started in terms of one of the areas of the ordinance that I think needs to be looked at and improved upon, and maybe even setting different categories for, you know, a home business that's just one person versus somebody who might want to hire two people, but again, you know, looking at, again, how we can keep our economy local and getting people to make money when they can't find jobs.
But it's all supervised already by the Board of Health and the state regulations, right?
But it's prohibited in zoning.
Right, but I mean, if we're, were we to allow it, it would fall under?
Absolutely, so if we were to allow it, they would still need to go to the Board of Health and get all of the inspections done and follow all of the board regulations that's under Board of Health.
That's a good question. So your thinking is that the home kitchen would be to produce baked goods that would then be sold from other establishments, not necessarily from your home?
No, that's actually a different thing altogether, they would only be able to be sold either directly to consumers or to the, through the farmer's market, so I wouldn't be able to give my product to Biggie's, for example, and have them sell it.
I see.
It would have to be a direct exchange.
Okay, yeah, I think one of the, the only reason I ask this, one of the concerns in the current ordinance has to do with, it's a thing that runs through a lot of similar businesses, is not having a steady stream of people coming, you know, driving to your house as though it were a retail outlet or a store, so, of course, which disrupts the feeling of a neighborhood which seems to be the goal of it.
Right.
I mean, I'm personally not opposed to it if it's, but I'm just bringing it up, that's why, and that's why I asked the question.
Well, I think with the imposition of the East Hampton farmer's market, which is awesome for local businesses, this is an outlet for that, where we'd be able to sell bread to people directly in a venue that encourages that kind of economic stimulation.
Well, I don't know, I'm sorry, Kristen Davis, 18 Pepinav, owner of Popcorn Noir. That actually raises a question that I think is something we should discuss if we do move forward on something like this, and that is the availability of wholesaling to local businesses. As a business owner, that's an angle that we'd really like to explore, but I know that's something that also has to be discussed with the Health Department, because I know that they have their own specific regulations, but if we're looking to adjust the ordinances as they are, that might be an avenue that we could explore, because that opens up another potential industry in East Hampton, that you can then start to wholesale, and through that developing your customer base, the goal is to get these guys into their own brick and mortar businesses in our town, so I think it's a good stepping stone for that.
Did you say 10.43, is that?
10.43, yeah.
And, I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Julie.
Julie.
Yep.
Oh, last name.
Copullos, C-O-P.
Okay.
O-U-L-O-S.
Okay, cool. Great, okay.
Okay, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I will make sure that it gets on the agenda for discussion.
Thank you. When should I, how should I follow up?
The agenda is always posted the Thursday before our meetings, and the first place for it to start would be with a discussion amongst the planning board as to how we're going to go about looking into this, and there would have to be inquiry, and we'll have to decide how we're going to approach looking into this, and what the scope is going to be, and whether we want to look at the whole home employment situation, or whether we're going to look at just the bakery aspect. So, there has to be discussion amongst the planning board first, and we have some other items that are on tonight's agenda that we need to do tonight, so, the next meeting would be December 11th, so, at the soonest, that would be the beginning of discussion on the planning boards part amongst the planning board, and we'll probably take successive meetings after that for us to really get traction on it, but we will, I'll get it started on the agenda.
Okay.
I can also keep you posted, I'll give you my card, did I give it to you?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so just shoot me an email so I have your contact information, and when it pops up on the agenda, I can just send you an email.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
I have one question. You had stated that you just want to sell out of your home or at farmer's markets, but you had stated that there's possibility of selling to places like commercially, to like Biggie's, Big Wine, things like that. Do you want that, should we include that in a new ordinance or a bylaw?
We can talk about it as part of the discussion.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to know.
I think that makes it a lot more complicated.
There will be, there will be two items, I don't know if we should do separate or all, we'll have to discuss that.
I, I'd like those to just check in with Jackie and get a better sense of the health code regulations so that our zoning can.
Okay, I just thought I'd bring that up.
And my interest is just in that if we're going to start these discussions and explore the option, I think instead of being short-sighted and looking just in the small, maybe we look to the greater potential there, yeah, but if that's not possible, then I'd rather see it at the farmer's markets.
I think I had misspoken as well, it might be that if this gets changed, I would be able to potentially sell directly to.
I don't know either.
Business?
I think, I think you may, might be, I don't know.
It's a gray area.
Yeah. And I think Jackie really, the health code kind of trumps this, and it might even, I don't even know if it's something that would even necessarily need to be addressed in zoning, so I want to just sort of chew on it and check in with Jackie and ask her some questions.
That'd be great.
And, you know, really, the board needs to talk about it, but, you know, in general, the more, the wider the scope that we take, the longer the timeframe to get anything accomplished too, so if we narrow our focus, we may be able to provide relief for that specific area faster, rather than trying to be all encompassing and taking on more. Okay?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Thanks.
I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the rest of the agenda as presented unless there are changes to it next. Motion. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
They ask a question?
Sure.
Is the camera on?
Yes.
Great. Oh, I can't see.
Yeah, no, I make sure I walk up to it and.
It's great, I, I kind of like, you know, I like to watch it as, it makes good to it.
Okay, new business, we have a application for 14 industrial drive, the applicant. Come on up.
Look at the screen. Okay. Right.
Look at the board, the description of this, the record, make heads and shoulders before we even request any information.
My name is Jeffrey Rowland.
Jeffrey.
Uh-huh.
Rowland.
R-L-A-N.
R-W-L-A-N.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, go ahead.
We currently lease space in these works, we're outgrowing it big time, and we found this building for sale, it's like right behind the post office, we do about 80% of our sales online through the USPS, and it makes sense for us, and this is the perfect location. Right now, it's a machine shop, we're currently going through the environmental, what shall we call it, inspections, and, but it should be fine for what we need, so basically, it's a, it's a machine shop right now, that it would be a warehouse for online retail. We sell t-shirts and comic books and stuffed animals and things like that.
And you're not proposing any, any structural changes to the building itself?
No, not at all.
Or the exterior, you're just looking to change the?
Just the, yeah, just the use. Eventually, we'll probably build another building on that, it's down the road.
Anybody have any questions?
That explains why I was confused, there's no changes.
Yeah.
Really, it's really through a curve.
Yeah. Yeah, we just need to go in there and scrub everything out.
So it's strictly warehousing?
Yeah, it's basically the same thing that Webster did to that building, a couple of, like, two doors down, so.
Do you a comic book artist?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I recognize your name, yeah. Cool.
Yeah, I used to be, well, I thought it used to be my main thing, now I just run business stuff all the time.
So it's tricking in online business, then?
Yeah.
No walk-in or anything?
No, no, very occasionally, we might have like some sort of tax settlement, which we would, you know, apply for permits for and all that, but, yeah, everything is online.
Easy peasy.
Yeah, it's just a warehouse and.
Mm-hmm. Do you have anything to add?
No, it seems pretty, given there's one of these things like, why do they have to?
It's a great point. Nice to meet you, though.
Well, maybe we should, some of the questions that, you know, typically go into the decision like we talked about, parking, you've got gobs of parking, how many employees do you interview?
Seven.
Seven, so there's no issue with that.
We've got like three of us a bike to work.
Parking, waste management.
Um, just.
Use the regular dumpster, that's fair.
Yeah, how about deliveries and things like that?
Um, we do have about once a week, like a tractor trailer delivery, but we have, we'll have a forklift, and we'll just basically pull around back here and then we'll meet them up back and grab them.
Plenty around there.
And, and what about the stuff that you're shipping out?
The stuff we're shipping out, UPS and FedEx.
Just pick it up onsite?
Yeah, they just pick it up onsite, and we'll probably end up carting like stuff over to the post office in the back door.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Yeah, we'll actually end up saving over $1,000 a month by buying this building.
Wow.
Yeah.
So will FedEx, UPS, will that just be a once a day kind of thing? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I can't see how it's going to be any.
It's not really, it should be an industrial.
No, no, I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to get an idea.
It's a special permit, though, so I don't know if you want to go and look at the special permit section to make sure there's nothing that you're missing at the zoning, because you do have to draft a decision, findings and conditions, so just make sure you got it been covered. Talk about, talk about.
Structure of building, talk about frequency and parking. Yeah.
This is the last. Well, the traffic flow will be there anyways because of the building, that's the, there's going to be traffic flow even if the building wasn't there, the other buildings are there, so.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any more than hers right now.
Yeah, the only thing they're going to have is probably they have one tractor trailer a week, you know, a machine is there, and that shouldn't affect anything.
Yeah.
We make our own coffee.
See, they have their own coffee.
Yeah.
We have a machine that's sitting there, so.
No machines going for coffee, believe it.
Yeah, the only, more trash would be, we have a lot of cardboard that we recycle, but that's about that.
Yeah.
You'll need a.
I love it.
Yeah. It's a little one injection. Well, I don't see anything else.
Oh, well, it doesn't involve manufacturing, no, it's a projected number of motor vehicle trips, there's a site traffic flow, tend to minimize traffic, there's.
I'd be very surprised if anything came up, the building's already designed for it.
A detailed financial impact statement.
No, I don't think so.
Just want to cover your bases as well, that's the only reason I'm asking you to do it, is just to.
This is, yeah, this is such a low-impact use in an industrial zone, I.
Yeah, just how can you say?
Well, it's very hard to say to know with nothing.
Any, if there's no more discussion, take a moment to make a motion that we approve that's presented. One second. All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? Abstentions?
Great. Jessica does the money.
Who's going to hit you up before you're ready?
It's actually a key name at daddyclub.com, you can find Jeffrey at zapadico.com, I can write it down for you.
Do you want a copy of this for your own records, do you have one?
Uh, no, actually not.
If you take one, since you paid a thousand dollars for it, so you can.
Keep this in here.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
No. That was, that was good. That was really short and sweet.
I like it.
That, that really should be a safe, kind of, approval.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Warehousing in the industrial district requires a special permit.
No, special permit, yeah.
So, back to the list.
Yeah, it's a never-ending list.
Forever, never-ending.
Yeah.
Never-ending, always adding list.
Continuing down with old business, great performance standards, great development performance standards, does anybody want to start? I think this week we need to.
Start about.
Make some decisions on where we're going to go with this, if we're going to move forward with this, and we need to really narrow our focus.
What happened last week, our last meeting?
We decided that we need, well, we informally decided, I mean, we didn't really vote on anything, but we were sort of narrowing down what we wanted as far as goals, the things we wanted to encourage, and what kind of incentives we might be willing to offer for, sort of big picture, and we're discussing a point system rather than a sort of mandatory system. We also discussed the idea of whether it would be, whether you had to meet a certain point threshold, or whether you could meet a threshold and then somehow refer to your property as a green property or something like that.
And there was also comment today about making residence, assuming a lot of residences an optional rather than a mandatory, talk about ordinance, if you're going to make it an mandatory, so.
There was discussion if we even wanted to do it at all, and the general consensus seemed to be at the end of the meeting that we wanted to do something, but it should be fairly light, we don't want to go too heavily creating a whole bunch of new rules that were already basically covered.
And what did you cover, what, what are the simple things that?
Well, that was what we were sort of trying to, we left with that goal to go identify items, that's a.
So, I mean, some things that come to my mind, are pervious driveways and pavements as opposed to asphalt, those are growing in use and types, especially in Rhode Island where I go frequently enough, and I've been seeing along the areas there, some.
There's a company out there that has it down pretty, pretty well, the system of doing bricks in the beginning and then gravel and things, and a lot of people, very expensive homes even, a lot of folks are going for that, it's, maintenance on those kinds of things, the payback is, maintenance over the long haul is so much easier, and the environmental impact is certainly through eliminating a heat sink, like all this asphalt, the outgassing of materials in the asphalt over the long haul, and then repairing it, so, I mean, there are practical reasons to do those sorts of driveways and approaches, as well as, you know, the environmental, that's, it seems like a simple one, using Energy Star roofing replacements, that's all geared toward reducing heat in-house collected from the roof, reflected surfaces and such, and, I think leaving trees is a good one, I mean, of course, that kind of, only in the context of a lot of development of new homes, seems to be, seems to be a bit of a slash and burn mentality in terms of clearing the lot of everything, and then building a home and then putting stuff back, so you see for, for years, homes with, you know, small trees, and eventually will grow and pretty shade trees, but, you know, perhaps some kind of incentive to leave the trees, to avoid the slash and burn approach and leave some trees, you know, those seem to me like pretty simple things, and as far as the point system, how that might work is, you have a list of certain things and the value effect attached to them is a certain amount, and it's a laundry list of items, you can accumulate a certain level of, a certain number of points, it translates into some sort of, you know, payback in terms of relief from some restrictive codes. I think orienting a house, you know, to, not parallel to the street, but orienting it so that it's, can experience some passive solar, you know, features, passive solar features, especially like windows and things can be a plus to reduce the cost of heating, and therefore will, you know, reduce carbon footprint, that seems like a fairly easy thing to me, and something that could be, somebody might go for and say, you know.
Yeah, we had discussed that too, on the point system, it would be the, almost the best way to go, gives a homeowner or new construction a chance to say, I got X amount of points, and that point system will apply, but it's just, did we decide, or did we didn't make a decision on how many points you need for.
No, we haven't.
To get there.
We haven't. No, we're looking.
They have four, they have four things in here which are the incentives that they
recommend, maybe if we sort of looked at our incentives and then sort of valued them, and then we could apply points to the things that are in here. The four things are additional lot coverage or floor area, a partial waiver of parking space requirements, increase in building height limits, and reduction in frontage requirements.
Right.
Those are the four incentives that they have, and it may be that we can come up with more, but if we were to stick with those, or, I mean, we need to agree that those are things we want to even put on the table, you know, then we need to decide which of those should be weighted more, which of those is the best, and, you know, arbitrary numbers are best, you know, and my recommendation too is that, you know, there's a lot of different things in here, but I don't think you should make your point system go up above 100, whatever you do, you don't want it to be too clunky and number-based, you know.
I don't, I don't think we were going to even go that way.
Yeah, I'm just putting an arbitrary ceiling.
No, I think that if you were to stick with a positive number, maybe not 100, but maybe 50, 10, 10 would be good if you can get it.
10, 15, 20.
Right, something like that, and work up to say 30 or 40, and that would be a lot just to say that, but at least there'd be something there.
What do you guys think of those four incentives, or those things that you think are viable to put up on the table for, for green?
I have a, I have a wild start, when you say, well, I wouldn't be agreeable to, or support the notion of allowing a building to be taller without first looking at why buildings are limited to the height they are right now anyway, nor would I be agreeable to, or support allowing a building to be closer to the street, you know, for, for an exchange, because again, I feel that those things are, have a far greater impact on the whole community than, and were established for a particular reason that would first, should first be explored, as to why the particular constraints exist in the ordinance as they are right now. It turned out to be something totally frivolous without meaning, and the meaning is totally lost, and you think, oh, good reason, well, that would be different, but at least I'd like to see that explored.
I think we should take it off the list if it's a situation where they're going to have to come in for review anyway, because when they're doing this to get an automatic clearance, I mean, that's their incentive, and we're saying, well, it's not an automatic clearance, I'll go on, just like you would normally, then it shouldn't be an incentive on the list, you know.
Right, because I have to agree that the frontage should not be played with, and as far as the heights, we have regulations, and I don't know if we even want to fool with that either, I mean, we can do something, but the frontage, I'm really, I wouldn't.
The frontage or the setback?
Yeah.
The frontage and the.
Yeah, they're talking about the setback.
Yeah, the setback, right.
Right, okay, but not the front, I mean, I think the frontage seems like a pretty easy thing. Right, okay, but not the front, I mean, I think the frontage seems like a pretty easy thing that.
Right, the frontage, it stayed away, the setbacks are one step.
Well, if somebody's building a lot anyway, then the frontage already exists. It's either a pre-existing non-conforming frontage or it's a new frontage to be established. Saying that an incentive would be to allow the establishment of a non-conforming frontage.
Well, I think that, yeah, I think what you could do is you could take these steps to reduce the frontage requirements for a new project.
Like 100 feet to 90 feet.
Yeah. Okay. So I think you could, I mean, assuming that was the way you did it, you could say, all right, I'm going to position my house and do, bring roof and driveway and then I can build on an 80-foot or something like that. You know, whatever your number is, whatever your credit is.
This, this leads in though to, to the whole issue that I had with this, this whole notion in that if in fact you go that way, it means that we have to revamp our, every one of our, of our zones so that you can amend the frontage if they, if they meet this, this requirement. So it would have to be addressed in, in, you know, a lot, in, in multiple sections in the ordinance. And, and we're, we're becoming, you know, we're still hopefully on the precipice of, of being able to, to think about revamping these, these ordinances and doing this is just, I think, sort of spinning our wheels a little bit. I think maybe we continue in, in the line of, of putting this together in components as, as this is what we would like to do. So that if in fact we get funding and, and the ability to change the zoning, then it can be plugged into that whole process, but.
But if it's done by C. James, it says something that makes sense to me. If it's done on a percentage, like 10%. So, so there's a new section that says, that applies these rules to every zone.
Right.
On a percentage basis. So if a required frontage is this, reduction of 10%, you don't have to write it or change any of the other ordinance, you don't have to write anything in.
Just apply it. Any frontage requirement.
This is like an overlay district, except we're, we're doing an overlay in the entire city if these are complied with. Essentially, you look at these rules and you look at these rules and you apply them both. So we don't have to rewrite anything.
Okay.
And on that, I was about to say that some of these things can actually be helpful or, or apply only to certain districts, like the aquifer overlay district, where it was zoned at one time at R-15. And there were even some lots that were allowed to be smaller than 15,000 square feet. It was rezoned to R-40 after a couple of studies were done showing that, you know, we probably should leave that open so we can get some recharge. However, so you have a number of homes there and you have a number of new things going in. And I feel maybe there aren't being well, this asphalt, application of asphalt or doing parking spaces doesn't require permanent. So in the aquifer overlay district, you know, watching driveways go in when in many cases the, the impervious surface on a lot is already exceeding that which is allowed, but yet more impervious surface is going down. So in particular, like pervious pavement or pervious driveways in the overlay district, the aquifer overlay district could be a very good incentive and may carry, you know, more points in that overlay district perhaps to, to incentivize people to actually do that. The, the other way around it would be to obviously require a permit to apply asphalt in the overlay district, but I'm sure that would be met with some resistance as well.
And I think that's a really good idea. It requires a lot of oversight on our part to sort of min-max these each different district and each different day and then model when there's a change and that's a lot of work.
Right, it requires a lot of thinking and planning on not just having a homeowner building, right? It's got to be on our part to make sure that what we're doing is going to benefit and not cause any more disruption. I don't like the idea of fooling around with frontages. I'd like to keep the aquifer protected. But, you know, you're going to go through. It's not an easy task. I can, I'm thinking about it and it just sometimes boggles your mind to say, allow this, but don't allow that, take points for this and 10% here and then.
You know, one of the things we discussed at the last meeting was that building green is a benefit in and of itself.
Right.
People are going to want to buy green. I mean, you, you look at the treehouse and I mean, it's, it's there. One of the things you could do is take this document and, you know, pull out the information about incentives and the way it was written, just maybe, you know, here's a list of things you can do for green and just make it information that's given out at the planning board rather than making it ordinance. At that point, you're educating, you're not requiring. I mean, it's, that's the easiest way out on this.
Yeah, well, you have to go out to treehouse and take a look at some of the things they've done and try to apply it. I mean, they've done whatever they're doing, it's, it's sort of right. I mean, you can, might find a few wrong things, but it just seems that it's right. But how do you apply it for everyone?
That's the problem.
So, you know, you can use them as a model.
Well, also, I mean, some of it may be a return on investment by building green, but if you're requiring people to come up with more funds at the outset to make those investments, that's going to be a burden for a lot of individuals and small businesses, things like that. So how do you cope with that too?
But then again, you look at treehouse, it may be a burden, but you're going to sell those like hotcakes and you're going to, and they're going to do great.
But you're only going to sell them if you come up with the capital to build them the first time. If you can't actually build them the first time because you don't have the money, that's still going to be an empty lot. I mean, you got, so I think you got to bear in mind limited resources at the outset in some cases. So not everyone's in a position where they can say, you know, I'm going to do all these things and they're going to sell like hotcakes, cakes, because they're going to be lead certified. Because you might not be able to make all those things at the outset. So I think it's good to try to keep that in mind.
Yeah, but the thing too is you talk development, but you're not, you have to consider the individual who buys a piece of property and wants to build a home green. You know, the cost of, unfortunately, the cost of going green is more than just building a standard home.
Yeah. And nothing we're doing is going to mitigate that.
Sometimes not, I mean, so so far, there, nobody here thinks it's a good idea to mandate anything. It's all incentive driven, right? Anything that's going to require people to do anything. But if a laundry list is available for people to look at to say, here's a bunch of stuff here with points, a point system attached to it. Instead of putting a black roof on your house, if you put a roof that's more in this color scheme, it's actually certified. Actually roofing companies are cranking out shingles.
Right.
Metal, all kinds of materials, they cost no more. I mean, it's, it's just a color choice. It's all, all comes down to. This will give you some points that could be used for something else and it's a good thing to do. Orienting your house, read this so it's not parallel to the street. It's not going to look like all the other streets in the house that are running parallel to the street, but you might actually build a salt box that, that, a salt box house that actually functions the way they're supposed to function by doing so. So that doesn't cost anymore to orient your house.
No, and I think as long as it's elective and not mandatory, then I think that any of it is, I mean, if it's all elective, it doesn't matter, or for incentives, then it doesn't matter what things you put on there. I mean, it can be, you know, any of these things and somebody can always opt out of it. That, that changes that whole formula entirely.
That's what I thought we were talking about, so.
Well, we can have the higher-end items. If people can afford it, they do it, but you don't have to.
I, I think the consensus was that we work to mandate the, the single-family structure. We really haven't had the discussion on, on any of the rest of it. Most of our discussions have been centered around single-family and duplex kind of things from the way I've interpreted what we've been.
I don't think any of it should be mandated personally. And I think people should just do what they want, but get some reward for it.
If they can, and if they can afford it and they meet the certain standards and they get rewarded for it. You know, if there's a schedule or a threshold they can reach, you can just keep going up.
Problem is we crossed off all of our rewards, it's being too difficult.
Right, well, at this point, it's floor area and reduction of 20 parking spaces. 20 parking spaces is only going to apply to certain.
Very few.
Projects in general anyway, so it's basically for additional floor area.
Right. Another benefit too is, and we're not really going out there and testing, but we're not a lead certified specifically, but in, in a way, we're kind of making our own rating system and someone could advertise that, I'm, I'm 15 points on the East Hampton and, and maybe that helps them make a sale. Who knows? Because they can still call themselves East Hampton Green or whatever, you understand?
Good point, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a form of marketing, so that's a benefit.
So how are we going to get, bring this to fruition?
Jessica?
I.
Are we going in the right?
It sounds to me that that having a point-based system with incentives so that if you hit 20 points, you can pick one of these incentive items. If you hit 30 points, you can pick two, if you hit, you know, whatever.
We only have two on the list.
Okay, I want to, I want to actually say something about the reduced frontage requirements because I think there is a need. I've had two requests in this past week for people who have substantial lots with a lot of backland and want to build a house for their mother or their relative in the backland, but they don't have enough frontage to split the lot in two. And the only way right now that we can do a reduced frontage lot is through a cluster subdivision in East Hampton. There's no other way for somebody to do that. So I think there actually is a desire and some bit of a need for reduced frontage mostly to be able to create a flag lot of sorts. Because we don't have regulations on the books that allow flag lots, have any regulations on how to create flag lots. But in this past week, I've had two requests for people who have parcels that have substantial backland and they wanted to put a house in backland with access.
I think the frontage thing too, unlike the setback and the building height, doesn't, at least to my mind, implicate the same safety concerns that the height and the, and the setbacks would where you're sort of encroaching on roadways and neighbors and that sort of thing. So I'm, I'm inclined to be more open to that.
I feel similarly, especially if the number's something like 10%.
Right.
Okay, well, when I spoke to the frontage earlier, I was confused. I was talking about setbacks, yeah. So I, I have no issue with the frontage.
I think the frontage, just only because this is what's happened in the past week, you know, two requests and it's just sort of alerted to me that, huh, this is something that I can't figure out how to get around. There's no way to permit this right now. So, because we, we hemmed and hawed in a bunch of different ways and I even ended up actually yelling towards and saying, how has this been done in the past?
So the, the other option is, is to allow a green house to be built in backland with the creation of a sort of flag lot.
A flag lot. Right, allowing flag lots.
So you have to have enough frontage on the flag lot to allow for a private drive or something like that.
Exactly, so we figure out whatever that number is and, you know, I can look up flag lot regulations and figure it out if it's 10 feet, 12 feet, 15 feet, whatever it might be. But as long as they kept to be adequate frontage, I think on the other parcel, I'm okay. I don't want to say two non-conforming parcels, but, you know, I'm okay with the idea of, it seems to me there's quite a few parcels that this could apply to, I guess. And it's, it's just a request that, like I said, that's been flagged to me this week just because it's happened twice, so.
Well, and it may be a way to solve that problem on its own. I mean, you, you could even go away from just the 10% credit. You could create, one of the benefits could be in the event you have a flag lot, a qualifying lot that has this sort of backland with this amount of roadway, that that can be one of the incentives. So it may not apply to 95% of the applicants, but you can tell somebody who calls in, if you do this, this and this, you qualify for this green exemption.
Right.
So I mean, that might be, and that, I mean, it wouldn't be a whole lot of people, I don't think, but for those that have that lot, it would be a really strong incentive for them.
Right, exactly.
To take in some of these ideas.
Which is what we want in this one.
That's a good idea.
So I, and I think the format that you're heading towards makes sense to me. Having a point system with incentive base, so it's not mandating it. You hit whatever these threshold numbers are and you get to pick more than one incentive. If you hit more points, then you get more incentives, does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's just a matter of figuring out what the incentives that you're comfortable with. I think the reduced parking might be something that would be interesting to commercial applicants. We have a transfer developments rights bylaw that technically, I think, already permits that to happen or that's part of the amendment that Chris Curtis was talking about, was adding that parking lot reduction. But nobody's used that. So, you know, this might be just another way to allow folks to, an easier way than going through a transfer development rights process to have a reduction on, on parking.
But so rarely that it, it may not happen.
But we have a, one of the things you'll be looking at tonight from the ZPA is a situation where a person that's zoned right outside the town-to-town business line and they are required, they're zoned R-5, they have parking requirements when they have no off-street parking. So again, this is just, I'm trying to put a real-life example that here's a situation where somebody might actually want a reduction of parking requirements. I don't know, go ahead.
Well, when talking about parking reductions, I, I think that from my point of view would require a lot of discussion to cover all the bases on, you know, we're, having worked in, in areas where I think the parking requirements were kind of lost in the shuffle and seeing what the outcome is. In a beach area where you, you know, just people park everywhere because there was no, they, well, here, you know, it snows, right? So less onsite parking means more on-street parking when it snows and people are asked not to park on the street. Where do these cars go? Where are you storing the snow on the reduced parking lot sites? You know, where does it go? So part of the discussion would include, if you're going to have reduced parking for cars, where does the snow go? Where do you have like emergency parking to get cars off the street if you need to? This temporary, not, not permanent parking space, but how are you going to accommodate the cars? You know, having worked in, in even Northampton when it snows, you've got like single lanes for an entire length of a street and it's just outrageous, you know, try to get down the street, you end up backing up and going, it's absurd. And I would hate to see that happen in East Hampton.
Well, there is a pretty strong incentive for a business to have adequate parking for people, for customers to get there.
Right.
Right, so I mean, on the other side of that is that I don't think, you know, even if we allowed Big E's to not have their parking lot, they would want people to be able to come and park in their parking lot. So there's sort of, I think that probably cuts both ways, but I think that maybe you might say, you might be reluctant that people would jump at the reduction of parking spaces and then five years down the road truly regret that they had done that.
Right.
And that may be the situation that comes up, but.
But I believe some of the parking that's required now allows for not maximum capacity at all the time. It would allow for snow storage as we often see around town in parking lots, big mountains of snow in parking lots where cars, you know, it's marked out for cars to be parked. Sometimes those mountains of snow can be there for a very long time, so.
Right, so maybe you reduce the parking spaces, require that they're available for parking year-round and the trade-off will be cost of snow removal for a business, you know. So you can drop it down from 20 to 12, but. Or it can be a gravel or grass area that they store the snow on.
Exactly.
Sure, but not.
That's a lot, yeah. Just wanted to go for.
The snow removal is a, is a good point.
Want to speak to the reason why we have the current ordinance concerning parking? Why does it exist and address those concerns as we're thinking about reducing, you know, that number? What does that mean?
So we've been looking at, at the incentives on the other end as to, you know, what the things are. I think page two has the most succinct synopsis and there's 13 pieces here and eight for subdivisions. And you might just get one point for each one they meet on, on page two and then, you know, that's a very simple weighted for us to market.
But the subsections, I mean, some of them have some pretty own requirements, I think, I don't know that.
So we could weight them more highly in some cases and not in others. Maybe if we went down through those, we could come up with values for them.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And use these as, as sort of the master template or outline.
So let me just ask, because if, if we communicate this back to Chris Curtis to revise, because we don't have to do the actual work, we just have to tell him what to do, right?
Right.
So, so we would essentially sort of get rid of all of the the submission requirements, right? Because it's just going to be with whatever submission people are doing, right? This isn't a separate permit they're asking for.
Right.
Okay, so all of that would want to be gone. And then point-based system with incentives, but you guys still need to decide what incentives you want. And then we will need to then go through these design standards, each one, and kind of mark them up, I guess, before we send back to them. Or at least tell them that some of these are too much and we want them to come down or. So I'm just trying to establish some processes here, that's all.
No, no, I think it's, it's great. I, I think we're making significant progress in the right direction here. Maybe for the next meeting, we go down these lists and, and look at them and everybody come in, comes in with, with their, their input. And then we quickly go down the list of these and, and we get them marked off so that.
The specific items?
The specific items, whether we want them, what we think a, a point weight should be for them. If you have any, any serious concerns that don't want them on the list for, for whatever reason. And then incentives, we've added flag lots, we've added a couple of other things.
So what, what do you have right now? Because right now I only have, did you like the additional lot coverage floor area or not?
I don't, didn't hear any objections to.
Yeah, that's like the easiest.
Yeah, I agree.
Lot cover.
The square foot.
The square foot is a lot.
Allowing them to increase.
Allowing them to increase the size.
To exceed a percentage of lot coverage.
Yeah.
But we just need to be cognizant of the Aquifer zone.
Yeah, that can be...
So, I mean, that someone's got to be, like, exempt from the whole, don't you agree?
I agree, but I also think conversely that use of impervious pavement there could have more weight in that zone.
Right, okay.
Could be worth more points.
So if we take away, if there's more space, we give more points for impervious pavement or other ideas to some of the coverage.
But then the only incentive we have there is the parking lot, the parking spaces.
Well, and the frontage, we have lot...
Oh, yeah, we're back on the frontage, that's true.
And you could still do a flag lot there, why not? As long as it beats all the requirements of impervious, you know...
Yeah.
So additional lot coverage and floor area or not floor area? You're okay with? Or is it just lot coverage?
Well, the fact is, you know, in the Aquifer overlay district, people had already, this has, I've never seen this implemented here, though I did bring it up for discussion in the ZBA a couple times. You actually can exceed...
Yeah, you just have to...
If you do an artificial recharge system, so...
Right, you have to.
And somebody's actually doing one right now, Jim.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I was talking to the building inspector about it today. So Jim Gracia said there is everybody down there putting in, I can't remember what the hell it is now, putting something in.
Like a French drain kind of system?
Something even more than that. I can't remember what it is, but he is doing something in order to...
Yeah, if the town came up, if the engineer actually came up with the design, it could be applied to most situations and just did a thing that could be attached to plans, I think it would happen a lot more. It seems to not come up.
Well, I now actually have a copy of the publication that's referenced in the zoning from 1996 and a more updated version that has the same sort of information. So I do alert people when they talk to us, you know, here is a publication that provides you with information of how you can exceed this, so...
Well, so then maybe you can say, "Increase floor area or lot coverage," providing you also met the requirements of this...
Well, I'm saying we could actually maybe cover that twice, but first of all, it is covered in the overlay district language, Aquifer district language. We could include it in this as well, perhaps, to further, you know, put it, bring it up to the top of people's minds as they see it. And then it might actually happen because we attach, actually, I don't know, in some way, incentivize it.
Harry has the...
Yeah. I think Harry wants to talk.
Just maybe, you know?
So, the question I have is, when does a lot with impervious pavement become illegal? We had Parkin Street built on top of that Aquifer, and they were going to use that pavement, and they couldn't do it because it's on top of the Aquifer. When does a residential building become...
Anything in the, the presence is not technically in the Aquifer's zone, overlay zone. It's outside our overlay zone, which is where we have impervious restrictions. It's in technically the Aquifer, but our zoning district doesn't include the northern half of the Aquifer at this point. So that, I just want to clarify that for you. So that's, but, when does it take effect for...
I understand your question, yeah. It has to do with, when the Parsons Village came up, the people did a lot of research on impervious pavement because they are...
That's a Zone Two or Zone...
It's part of the Zone Two, but it's, see, there's two different, see, I think the confusion was that we have a zoning district, which is the Aquifer zoning district, which is essentially, you know, it's from, like, Holyoke Street down. And then there's the northern half, which there's still discrepancies on exactly where the Aquifer is and where the clay layers are, and so there hasn't been, there's not a consistent model of where the Aquifer lies in the northern half, and that's why it hasn't been included in the zoning yet, because there's still some discussion of where exactly it is. And so, yes, technically that Parsons is in the Aquifer, as in the Barnes Aquifer, but in terms of our Aquifer zoning, it is not. And so, they dealt with the impervious pavement as a way to mitigate stormwater issues and infiltration into the Barnes Aquifer. However, there was no regulations in terms of zoning that forced them to do that. They did that in their proposal.
Yeah, they had a right idea of doing it, but it just...
But it wasn't allowed, right? Didn't the state say that...
There was, there's, impervious pavement, there's, we're getting a little off track, but impervious pavement, there's a lot of, there's good impervious pavement, there's also bad impervious pavement, and it's a technology that's continually improving. And there's, because we live in a snow environment that has ice and sand, and so those pavors need to get cleaned out and they freeze, and so there's, the technology is improving and there's better pavors out there now than there even was a few years ago. So it's, you know, I think it's not something to be completely written off, but...
Because at that point, when they were discussing that, and that impervious, that was brought up when we had our meeting at the Barnes Aquifer, and the Barnes Aquifer went through, when they came up and they did a whole dissertation, and they even brought in the impervious and showed how much it helped, which was a great idea, but unfortunately it didn't go over well with the people in East Hampton. But the Barnes Aquifer committee said that, at that time, that was a good idea to do, but for some reason it didn't go.
But what's important here, Harry, is I think that in the Aquifer overlay district, there's a maximum amount of impervious surface that's allowed. So, and as far as I know, you're not required to have a driveway, you know, a paved driveway to park your car on. So, the idea, some of the discussions surrounding impervious pavement was, well, what if your car leaks oil, it goes through the pavement, you can't get it, that...
We have to be careful that's an incentive with that, with robbing Peter to pay Paul to make a clean.
But it doesn't, yeah, but that doesn't exist here. Somebody really wanted to maximize their home on the Aquifer, which my house is on the Aquifer, so, and I'm really hyper-aware of, you know, the amount of space is there, how much impervious surface I have and stuff like that. I know what I can do, what I can't do. One thing I know I don't have to have is an impervious driveway, and there's no requirement for me to have such a thing to park my car on. So if my car leaks oil, it could, either goes into dirt or it can go into impervious pavement, and to me, that would be a better deal because the likelihood of, I mean, I'd rather have water infiltrating the Aquifer than not, you know? So, to me, that's a decent idea.
Okay. So, if we go through and... Do we want to maybe pick just a few of these to go over next time? I mean, there's like 10 pages of fine points in here. I don't know that we want to spend the whole meeting going through line by line next time, but if people want to.
So I do want to say that you now have two incentives that you've agreed upon, right? So reduced frontage, flag lots, and additional lot coverage. So those two are agreed on. You may have more that you add as you go through this list. Maybe there's things that you review in the sections that make them the incentive.
Well, the square footage one, right?
Was that okay as well, the floor area?
Well, I believe so. I don't think anybody, at least at this point.
Except on the Aquifer.
Except on the Aquifer, unless they also do... I mean, I guess the other question is how much and where you have to go to get it, which obviously changes the...
And they have to be outside parameters. What's the maximum?
Right. How many credits you can get and that sort of thing.
How much?
Right.
Have to be constraints on how much larger or much, you know?
Right. Well, like, the sample here is 2,000 square feet of additional floor area. This is, well, this is anywhere. I mean, and I think this is supposed to be a broad thing for us to cut down, but the hypothetical here is, if you do any of these standards here, you earn 2,000 square feet of additional floor area.
But our block, that could actually cover it all.
Right.
So, sort of getting back to process, do you want to focus on limits of site disturbance, tree preservation, and solar access next meeting so that everybody should read those sections and be familiar with them so that you can address them?
That's great. So Page Two?
True.
Well, no, it starts on like eight, I think.
Eight on my version, but it could all be different.
So that'd be eight, nine, and the top of 10.
Yep, top of 10. So those three sections and then...
Eight, nine, and ten.
So everybody should read them and be familiar with them by the next meeting.
Yeah. So with the pages eight, nine, ten. Eight, nine, ten.
All right.
It's getting there.
Kind of like scales pace for where I'm working.
Yeah. Set it to a little slower.
Sideways forward fashion.
It's like the physical clock, you know?
Let's not go there.
All right. It's a lot different.
Have a few comments that came in from...
Is this all your work?
It's mostly a rework and tearing down city council, and I borrow a couple things from Framingham, from their rules that I found on the Internet.
I like that.
Are part of that. There are some errors or problems. Ben pointed out that the timeframe for special permits and site plan approval and such needs to be drawn back so that advertising can be done correctly. Suggestions, Jessica suggested, I thought of this after I sent this out to you guys as well, I think we should put in something, a little sentence about videotaping. And then she's, she pointed out some ideas for expanding this, possibly doing it later, but fee schedules, collection of fees for peer reviews, some performance guarantees, appointments to regional boards that we have now as Bay Pac and TV PC and those types of things be added, and a process for establishment of ad hoc subcommittees.
That's what I was going to mention right there, because you define a process, you're saving a ton of time. We spent at least three meetings.
But that does, does that now incorporate, because it's listed as the East Hampton Planning Board rules? With adding all that, it sort of expands it to going over what is required at East Hampton rules, you know, the board, planning board rules.
It's within the scope of what we would, how, what things that the planning board would be doing. So it's still all part of the planning board. It would be part of the planning board rules. There would just be more, there would be more things. I mean, Framingham, the town, I think it's a town, right? Theirs is about 30 pages long. I mean, it's so comprehensive. I mean, it describes, you know, you have...
And the reason for that, let me just maybe explain why you would want, is that for zoning, especially with a town, you have to go through a town meeting vote, and you need to get a 2/3 majority vote, and it's very difficult to get zoning changes. If you take some of those procedural items that's in the zoning, like how you file a special permit, if they ever need to be amended in the future, it's just a majority vote of the planning board. You don't have to go to a town meeting vote for it. So that's why a lot of communities, especially town meeting communities, have really comprehensive rules and regs, because then they don't have to go to that town meeting vote to get some fee schedule change or, you know what I mean? So that's, that's why some of them are quite comprehensive.
The other benefit is for when new members come aboard. I mean, it makes understanding process so much easier.
This, these rules can be expanded and it becomes a legacy of consistency in how planning board or board works. And, so, I mean, I fully understand that there's things in here that could be improved upon and there are things missing from this. I just...
I would definitely like to see a formation of subcommittee added.
I think the performance guarantee, or the peer review, the, just the laws that dictate how boards are allowed to hire peer review, there's very specific legislative language, master general law, and it would, I think, help me tremendously to have, it would make me feel better and more secure if we had that language somewhere that said, "This is our process for hiring peer review. We have an account, this money goes into account, it accrues interest, that's given back at the end." I think having that just very clear language would make things easier. Because there could be a huge special permit application that comes before you that is going to need you to hire engineers and your own consultant staff to review, and to have that language in there in place would be a huge benefit and make things clearer.
And this is, this becomes a public record once we go around it. It makes, it gives the public fair notice of how things are set and the way, what they can expect. So I think, and it's consistent, it's the same thing for...
You know, it'd be also nice too if something can be included as to having a secretary. I know the budget is, when I looked at the line for the line item, when it used to be, it was so low that we really couldn't get a secretary. And then when we did have one, some of the meetings were so short that when the person came in, some of these meetings were half-hour meetings and then gone, and it wasn't feasible for this person to be the secretary. So, you know, you can't say, "We're going to have a two-hour meeting every time," or "a three-hour meeting," or whatever. But we're counting on each other to be our own secretary, which is not bad, but it's, we should have someone here to take our notes.
What, well, actually, in master general law, forming, in the planning boards requires that the planning board elect from its own number a clerk. So, I agree with what you're saying, but then what would be the function of the clerk, which we must have?
Unless the clerk wanted to put the agenda together and do those tasks, and then the chair is left more as a facilitation position for hearing, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, there should be a function for, we have to appoint a clerk. It should just be like, "Well, you're the clerk, this, so we fulfill, you know, this, and then, you know, you're just the clerk." But, you know, there should be a function. So I think that maybe something, the rules, if we're going to consider that, you know, hiring somebody to keep the minutes and be the secretary.
I just threw that out because, I don't know, it's just...
It's always the hardest thing to recruit for on any committee I've been on. But ultimately, you know, times are tight. I can't see that we'd be able to pay for it or then explain why we're paying for it when...
Well, zoning board does.
Yeah.
The zoning board does a...
They have their own.
See, that's a blow coming from that.
But I've seen, there's a big one, everyone, if someone was to come, if you were to come up to me and say, "You want to be clerk," I wouldn't, because I really don't want to be able to take the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, not everyone's...
Sometimes the minutes are taken and they're just drawn down, who said what, and then that's it. You know, you take, you take a one page. When we had a secretary, almost every word verbatim was written down.
But there's a difference between...
But we have, we have the video, so we don't really have to be so precise as to...
But the requirements for writing minutes are not an attempt at capturing conversation. They're supposed to be the essence of what transpired in the meeting.
Right.
If you have a stenographer, then it's, and so, sometimes it's a bad choice to try and capture people's words because you run into inaccuracies rather than just telling a narrative of what went on during the meeting is really sort of, from my interpretation of what's meant by writing.
Because of the fact that now that we have video, no matter what, if you say, "He said, she said," it's right there.
It is. I think, I mean, I like what we've got in the system we have, and I use the same system in the committees I've been a part of. But I do think there's an issue that will someday come up where there's no one at the board that's going to be the secretary, and then that's not our problem.
That's the point is, there's a line item in there for the planning board, so there's a line for that. So, if we're not going to, if it doesn't have to be a line item, what do we do?
Because, let me go back to the general budget.
Pizza party, you said.
Not pizza party.
But why not? But why not the thing?
Not a party.
The ZBA does it, but I know that the ZBA, at least from what I can...
Has not always done it.
Well, and there are three now. As far as I, we're doing our third hired clerk now.
Well, I think Barbara sort of was done doing ZBA. She was, I don't know if she got paid to do the ZBA minutes, but it was, it was a transition of, Barbara was not going to maintain the ZBA anymore, and so they were looking for somebody to come in and take the minutes for the ZBA. I don't know.
I'm just saying, run the third, run the third minute taker, though, from the ZBA that probably hired.
Right, so there are line items.
So what I'm saying is there's kind of a turnover there, so it's not exactly as reliable.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. When we, when we did have secretaries, they were just, they're here one day and all of a sudden, no, they're gone. Because most of the time it's, you know, you pass it off to college students who are gonna do that. But the idea is, I'm just wondering, if there's a line item in there, why is a line item in there if we don't need one?
I think we should just think about just continuing as we've gone and if we have a large application come forward or something, then maybe you think about bringing somebody in for those types of things when there's a lot to try and keep up. But I, I think our normal meetings are within the capacity of somebody who's serving as a board member.
I didn't need to start a new one.
No, I think it's valid. It's a valid discussion.
Why is it there and we don't have a secretary?
Well, another, another option might be that clerks' responsibilities are to take minutes when such a person doesn't show up or in the event we don't have a person who is, you know, the secretary or something like that. I mean, there's, yeah, there's...
One day I'll build a program as a secretary, but until that day, would you do me a favor, it's not for trouble, and read the list of things that you thought you wanted to add to that at the very beginning of this conversation?
When I said it, Jessica had suggested the following list, the fee schedule, including language on waivers of fees.
Is that the peer review thing or something?
Collection of fees for peer reviews, performance guarantees. I can just forward this to you if you want to.
Yeah, that way it's...
Appointments to regional boards, processes for establishment of ad hoc videotaping. But I'll forward her if you want.
And they don't need to be incorporated now. It's just things that popped into my head. What you have now is pretty solid and you could pretty much probably adopt it pretty quickly, but these might be things to consider for amendments to it because you can continue to grow these documents over time.
So I think, you know, if nobody has any objections or any other things to add to this, Ben said that he would, I asked him, I, when he pointed out the timeframes, I said, I said, yeah, well, what's an accurate, from your perspective, timeframe for each specific item? And I'd like to redress that in here and correct it. And if there are other things, if anybody wants to, I would like to add the videotaping thing immediately.
Yeah, that's in there.
Just a line saying that we endorse it and that we will do it when equipment is provided to us, that the meetings will be videotaped.
These other things that you mentioned that you're gonna email the list, is that, are those things that you want to get approval to add?
I'm, I'm fine with us getting the general thing, maybe adding the videotape line, getting the timeframe corrected, adopting the basics and then working on these things, you know, points at a time, and then just take a vote to add it to the, to our rules. It might be a more constructive and easier way to try to balance these big, unwieldy balls in the air.
Yeah, some of them are big. The fees is huge, so.
So do you want to do that now or wait for Ben to make the...
Why don't we, if everybody's okay with it, wait until we at least get that corrected before we do tonight?
Just looking good though.
If they have any other input that they have?
I had some type of the formatting stuff lying in the emails.
Sure.
Yeah, that's great. All right.
You talking about the whole thing?
Yeah, listen, one, yeah.
Yeah, I gotta push them.
Okay.
I just blast out this this afternoon. And I think I find it here. What I want to know is when is a planning board member talking in his own presence or talking in public and on his own behalf rather than...
I think that's qualified.
Number nine.
Actually, as saying...
Well, it's real nine eighty-four.
It says representing said board. If you're, if you're in public as a planning board member.
So in other words, if you're in public as a person, if you're just yourself, you can speak your...
You can use profanity.
I'm not saying you would profanity.
Well, no, you can. I mean, it's not gonna, the idea is, I mean, like, the CPA thing, you're there technically as a planning board representative, right?
Yeah.
Isn't that, so I mean, that, under the language of this, that's where you'd be sort of bad to...
Well, just, you know, say, go to a council meeting and there's something that's, you tore a council and you get up as a, you know, great, they know you're a member of the planning board.
But you're not representing, you're not representing them.
But if we send you there, if we say Harry's gonna go and talk about, you know, the new proposed ordinance.
I'm just curious. I just don't want to get in trouble or something like that.
No, in fact, I put that, I put that little phrase about...
That's really easy.
About planning board business because I didn't think that we should be held accountable. You know, I think it's a, it's a different standard when you're functioning as a public official than, than just when you're a citizen within the community, so.
Technically it is, but in terms of public perception, it isn't and you should always be...
Well, that's the whole thing. I mean, whether, you know, everybody knows. I mean, if they say the wrong thing, then you're...
Yeah, no matter where.
No matter what.
It makes sense to, Ron, to put an explicit language about how this can be changed at any time by a member of the planning board, just so that if it comes to a point where not all of us are there, we don't all know it, it kind of, you know, it's the last section in there that it can be revised and amended at any time by...
Sure.
That makes it clear whoever reads it at any time.
Great idea.
That'll make you happy, Harry. Happy Harry.
It's really easy to get in trouble. It really is. I mean, you can just...
Well, if you don't put that part in, I can get in trouble just talking to my wife at home. That would be out of the code of ethics.
Well, you have a different one when you're talking to your wife.
Okay.
That's a different code.
I mean, there's times where I go to a meeting somewhere, like I'll go to a council meeting. I'm not, I'll be talking to somebody, say, you have to account to me about something? And that's when you get in trouble.
You're not there as a planning board member.
But you're not a planning board member at that point.
No, I understand.
You feel like just saying, now I'm no longer representing the planning board.
Well, I know that. I've got a lot of cards. You know, I've got a lot of cards. I say, well, okay, this is me.
All right. Okay, we had a request from the ZBA for an opinion. This, this address has changed zoning in the last few years. It was originally downtown business and they requested a zoning change because they wanted to allow tenants to live in that building on the first floor. They went through the whole process with the city council and it was agreed that there was an R5 building between the downtown business district and this building. And so it was agreed to make it more contiguous, that we would allow the change to R5 at the owner's request. Then after the zoning change, then they decided to forbid this in the storefront and evidently now there is a business operating currently. So they're, they're looking for relief from the ZBA to allow, I don't know if there's still someone living in back of this business or on the first floor.
I think it's vacant.
Okay. So that's just a little bit of history that I've been involved in this property, but... It doesn't seem like a very large business that's going on there.
No.
Strangely enough, when it was downtown business before, it didn't have the, you know, they didn't have any parking.
There's no parking requirements in downtown business.
Right.
So they didn't have to supply them.
But they're in R5.
No, they're in R5.
So...
It's a mess.
So now they're under, under the gun on a parking requirement.
Yeah, but where, where would you think?
I mean, this is, I think this is what we end up all the time with these zoning board things is that, I mean, it sure doesn't look like a variance, but without the applicant in front of us to answer questions, not that we can say definitively, but I don't know how far we want to go on what we're... Personally, don't, don't think to, we should count it on this, but that's just my, just my view of it. I mean, I'd be inclined to not do anything as well, but...
I don't know what you can really comment on. The one thing is parking where.
But I think on face, you know, the ZBA is gonna, gonna have to deal with it with the applicant in front of them. Right, so anything that we say is gonna say, you know, all we have is the limited application. We don't have the applicant in front of us. That was standing that. We'll take a shot in the dark. I don't know.
I concur. Hunt. Defer. Sorry, I had my football on there.
Oh, I'm not even gonna say, I was gonna say, what comment could you make? But I'm not gonna make a comment to the comments. And so I'd say no comment. But then fly with it, I would think.
David, what do you think? Well, I think, you know, as a, in, first of all, I'm inclined to agree, but I just want to point out that as the planning board, planning board looks at how the town is developing, you comment on, any comment that may shape or help shape how things continue to go is worth making. The, you know, we're entitled to give a comment on this or our opinion on it or any cautions on it if we want. Having said that, I, you know, what can you say about this? It looks like a very unusual circumstance. It's a very small space and, you know, I've been watching the storefronts. They're, they're late on, it's unfortunate that they moved themselves out of its own, which wouldn't require parking.
Right.
But they are on the cusp of, they're right there on the line. I have no, what can you do? It's obviously a business location. It's been there for a very long time. I can't see any...
Harry?
If I can go back and move one.
Why can't we, for some reason, why can't these people be present when we pick up something like this?
Because they're not the part that actually makes the decision. You're just making a comment on it.
They couldn't be here just to give it their say?
I mean, we can give to as much as we know. As much as we know is they, exactly what Ron said, they went for a zone change. They wanted to put a residential unit on the first floor, which is prohibited in downtown business. At that time, they saw that to be their highest and best use of the building. They made the zone change. It went through, so now it's R5. The applicant struggled for three years to get any business in that, in that front spot. He's only in the R5 allowed to put in an antique gift shop, which he finally found somebody to have been there. And they're in. And he didn't realize he had to get a permit. And so the building inspector went and talked to him and said, how did, you know, and they had said, well, we were told it was okay because we were R5 and we were told okay, you know, three years ago. So, so they didn't realize they had to go for a permit. So that's why they're before the board is that they basically, the building inspector said, you don't have a legal permit to be in this space. How did you get it? And so, you know, we've heard, I've had the applicant in the office and, you know, he's frustrated. He's, he's had a hard time. He's, it's hard for his insurance in order to have, to have a vacant spot in his building. His insurance is about to get taken away because he can't fill the spot. I mean, it's, it's a conundrum, you know? By making this zone change, he's put himself unfortunately in this pickle and he needs zoning relief in order to keep the business in there. The business right now only has a two-month lease. They'll be in there until the end of Christmas and depending on what happens with this, they'll be able to stay. If they don't, are not zoned in the relief, then the business will go.
The unfortunate part is it's not through any lack of trying on the city's part because he asked for things and the city gave him what he asked for, you know, did this the last night.
It's backfired now.
It's up to the ZBA now.
It's a tough, it's a tough application and I feel for, for the owner. You know, I think it's, it's hard. I don't, I don't think he understood his full implications of making the zone change and how that would impact future use of the building. And maybe he wasn't clear saying, I wanted to put retail on the first floor. Maybe that was never discussed. He only ever thought of it being a residential use. So, you know, it's hard without any of us being here at the time when it happened. It's hard to know the history, but it's, it's tough, you know? We don't like to see vacant storefronts in downtown. It's the last thing we want to see, but there's, because of the zone change, there's rules that have to be applied, so.
What comment can we make to the zone other than say, you know, that the guy has put himself, like you say, into a, backed himself against the wall? The only thing we can say is, you know, for me personally, is say, well, give him relief, let him go forward. But can we say that as a board? Or do we want to say it, you know?
Say anything we want, but I mean, I don't, you know...
I don't know if we want to put ourselves in that position.
This isn't, there aren't a lot of multiple factors. I mean, this application to me seems pretty cut and dry.
Right. They should be able to make, make their decision. Right? I would agree with you on this. Make a comment. We have no comment.
Anybody else have a strong difference of opinion?
Emotionally, make no comment.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Anything else before the board?
Emotionally, yes.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?